I just told my dog I'm starting a meeting, he had to go upstairs with my wife. And you know what? He listened.
He knows who the boss is, huh?
Not really, it was, it was a, you know, it's like your kids, sometimes they listen to you, sometimes they don't, you know, I just, I lucked out.
I know, my dog doesn't bother me in the office till she hears other people talking, then she comes prancing in.
Hey Chuck, can you hear me? It's Ashley. Chuck?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Can you resend that attachment? That you sent out? Mine came in all garbled. With like.
I'll resend it.
Okay, cuz I, I thought you were.
Just get it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, that's it, okay, then I'll have time to read it.
Yeah, yeah. I think I had sent it out back, back in February, just when COVID hit. But, yeah.
Okay, no problem.
I'll resend it because frankly, you know, it, stuff that comes out a couple hours before the meeting, it's really unfair to ask people to talk about it.
If Lori Bickerd has it, she can share it once we get to that on the screen.
It's on, it's on my other computer and I, all I can do, I'll resend it out to everybody.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
Yeah.
Welcome, everybody, this will be our first May school board meeting for the Posco School District. Again, on Zoom, so very excited about that. And just looking around. Quite see everybody will do the roll in a minute. Speaker, if I could just bring up the agenda again for a minute, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. Okay, so we did the call to order, that's good, we'll take that, that will be just knocked right out, and we'll go around the pledge of allegiance, if you don't mind. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic.
Stands one nation. Invisible liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. And now, as we've grown accustomed to doing the roll call, be taken with the screenshots and everything else, the only person I haven't seen on the screen is Patty Grimm, I think, is the only one I haven't seen. Everybody else on here. Pretty sure I've seen everybody else.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here Bob.
Okay.
Just got here.
Okay, very good. There you go, she wanted it, okay. Very good, thanks Patty. Okay, now. A minute ago, now we haven't gotten quite there yet, but we'll, we'll get there in a minute. Executive session announcement. Have not had, we have not had an executive session since the last board meeting, so I don't have to announce one, so we'll just move right on past that one, we'll just slide right past that one. And we'll go now to public comment. And yeah, we're gonna go to public comment, and we're gonna see if there's any public comment. Now, we're gonna go to this question and answer from Stacy Messing. She said she had to rejoin because the screen froze, and did you see my question, Ashley answered this one, she says, she didn't see a question, I didn't see the question either, so actually, if you could just, there, I'm sorry. If you could just type your question in, we can answer it now, and this is supposed to be, at this stage, this is supposed to be questions related to the agenda, so if you have questions that were, a question was related to the agenda, if you just wanna take that in there, and we can kind of address that now, the question and answer period, we'll take care of it.
I, I can, I can answer that. And actually, I would, I'll defer then to. Think someone needs to. I'll mute, I'm sorry. That's okay. I, at Mondays, obviously, we were, we were down 20%, and I know there was some hypothesis that I know Mr. D'Enzo, Mr. Nestor had, so I'm gonna step out and let them jump in, cuz something else, this occurred after our Easter break as well, so gentlemen, if you wanna weigh in, that'd be great.
Can someone read the question? I don't know what we're, what you're answering.
I'll be glad to. What? From the committee meeting report, do you have a guess as to why there was a drop in the meals distributed?
I'm gonna chime in here.
You can jump in first, Garrett, see if you, see if you came up with the same idea I did.
Well, we just, I think we found that, that in both situations, it followed a holiday weekend. So I don't know if there were, you know, again, the hypothesis, maybe there were extra leftovers from Easter and Mother's Day that, or people were traveling, et cetera, that they did go visit their moms and, you know, and Easter breaks. So that was really what we guessed, but on both occasions, the, the numbers were lower on those two dates specifically.
The other item that we had considered a possibility was that May 8th was the first day that some, some of the businesses started to reopen, and we thought that maybe some employees were going to work instead of sitting in line waiting for food. Again, not, we had nothing to base it on other than happenstance, but that's, those were the two question, two concepts we came up with.
Thank you both. If I may jump back in, Mr. Lindgren, just for the record, gentlemen, how many fewer meals were served?
Believe it was a 180 less meals served, this, less packages, so to speak. I think that was the number, Dave, is that correct? You're muted.
I keep muting and unmuting myself, sorry. It was close to that, it might have been a couple more than that, but that's, that's pretty close. It was roughly 20%.
Thank you both.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other questions there. So Dr. Shirk, if you'd like to go ahead with the next items, approval of the minutes.
Okay, I'm just going to close this down, very good. Okay. On 4.1, approval of the monthly board minutes, our recommendation is to approve the monthly board action minutes for April 14th as submitted.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 4.1 and 4.2.
Second.
All right, we have, this is Graham, and a second from Mr. Parker to approve of minutes. 4.1 and 4.2, does anybody have any questions on these two items? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no, and state your name, please. Hearing none, motion passes without objection.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, the middle school accounts, and the cafeteria accounts as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Grimm, and a second from Dr. Nippert, that we receive the cafeteria accounts, I'm sorry, the accounts for approval. Are there any questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Sword without objection.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of $4,160,208.80 for April 2, 2020 as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Mrs. Grimm, and a second from Mr. Hut to pay the bills. Does anybody have any questions on those? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and state your name, please. All right, sword without objection.
I'm, I move that we approve the treasurer's report for April 2020 as presented and file them for audit.
Second.
Thank you.
We have Mrs. Grimm, and a second from Mr. Hut, that we approve the treasurer's report and file it for audit. Are there any questions on the treasurer's report? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Very good. Those say no, and state your name, please. Very good, sword without objection.
Moving on to 8.1, for the superintendent, I'd like to turn it over to our student board reps, Brianna and Madison, for an update during the last month. Thank you.
Good morning, board, I hope you guys are all doing well and staying safe. From what I've heard from students, and I've gotten feedback from them, online school's been going as well as it can, teachers have been communicating with us, making sure we're okay academically, and most importantly, emotionally, they've really stayed in touch and done a phenomenal job just switching over from in-class to online. AP courses also started this week with all the testing, I was one of the first tests this, at the beginning of the week, and that went very smoothly as well.
To speak for the high school, I know that a lot of students have been joining some of the clubs that we have going on, we have Cult Classics Movie Club, Jogging Club, Gaming Club, Video Game Club, and I think it's a really wonderful way to keep students connected, not just with each other, but with their teachers. It's something fun to take their minds off, you know, the craziness that's going on in the world right now. To speak for the seniors, we're definitely excited to be counting down the days till, till we're, you know, till we're done. And I mean that the absolute nicest way. It's just been, it's been crazy, and, and we're, you know, we're ready, we're ready to, to thank Posco for all that they've done and, and move on, be, be done with the online, the online learning. But everyone's, everyone's staying as positive as they can, teachers have been, have been wonderful. So we thank them a lot for what they've done for us during this time, and I think, I think students are handling all of this pretty well, given the circumstances.
I wanna thank you both for your comments, and really unsolicited, yet that I can tell from your heart, and, you know, I appreciate that, I know my, the principals appreciate that, the work that they've done, obviously, the staff appreciates that, and it's just, I just wanted to let you know that, that type of feedback for us is, is huge, coming from two of our student leaders, and obviously, I totally get the senior piece, Brianna, because it, it has been, it's, it's like a roller coaster, you can't even get off it, you know, so, you know, our hope is, and Dr. Ziegler and his team have a good plan in place, you know, for the next two weeks, and, and heading into our graduation piece, and so I just wanna thank you for your patience, both of you, and as far as the seniors go, you know, our goal is to, to do as much as possible during the next three make, weeks to celebrate your graduation class of 2020, thank you. Okay, just moving on to section 9.1 signage, the co-correct committee is recommending the approval of Phase 1 to provide signage throughout the districts. Funds would be used from Market Street Sports, Phase 1 would be completed by the fall of 2020 at an estimated cost of $6,742. I wanted to take this time, this was brought up on committee, and I just wanted to take time to have a discussion.
Dr. Shirk, on this thing here, when I brought it up last week, or I guess last meeting, I had mentioned that, oh, actually, no, never mind, I'm actually seeing it now, I didn't see my screen so small, I didn't see this from, from Market Street, I apologize, never mind.
No problem.
I recognize that the funding for this is coming through Market Street, but at this time, you know, where we're trying to pinch pennies and keep costs to a minimum, it seems to me that there might be other necessary things in the phys ed department that could come from this versus coming out of the regular budget. Unless that's the case, I would be voting no.
Actually, Bill, we did discuss that, and we do have money funds that will be replenishing this from the sponsors, but I do support this, this is the Phase 1, and if you look at, at what they're gonna do, it's really, really a good idea to do this, and it's going to market the school too, so I, I, I so am behind this, but I just wanted to let you know that the funds are continually with this, with the sponsorship, that they have the contract three to five years, the monies are replenished into the Market Street.
Yeah, if the rest of the board didn't know, or hear when we were at the last meeting, I remember, we have about $120,000 in Market Street right now, actually, probably a little bit more than that, and we get funded probably about $20,000 coming up next year, so this would take about roughly 6,000, 6,700 of that. I'm not exactly sure, Bill, as into areas you were talking, obviously, Market Street can be used for anything, we always can, it's at the discretion of the board, but I've always leaned towards using the funds as they were donated to the school for, to be used for the athletics, so that's one of the reasons why I'm all for, I approve the Phase 1 of this going through for.
Well set out.
Are there things in athletics that were currently budgeted to use through the taxpayer funds that could be purchased? I, cuz I agree with you that, you know, the money should be used where it's donated for, so, you know, something in the athletic area, is there funds where we can decrease, maybe this is a Dr. Nestor question, or Mr. Nestor question, decrease the budget for phys ed and use the funds for somewhere in there that's more of a priority for things that they have to have next year?
Yes, the athletic departments, or the phys ed department's budget is in the $100,000 range. It includes a, you know, uniforms, it includes a variety of other things. So if the board wanted to use it that way, they could. We've been using it for special projects since the inception, so again, as Al said, it's at, it's at the discretion of the board, but there is, there is, to answer your question, there is money in the budget for athletics and phys ed.
And if I can just chime in, we only went on a stipend for all of our spring coaches, so right there was a savings. I don't know the exact dollar amount, but there, there should be some money for the supplemental salaries that were not used. Everybody got quiet on me.
Okay, so this was a discussion item, was there any more questions on this, this is not, this is not on, for action for tonight, so are there any other questions or comments on signage for this evening? Hearing none, Dr. Shirk, if you'd like to move on to 9.2?
Thank you, I would.
Thank you, I would.
9.2, we're talking about the possibility of altering the existing real estate tax installment payment plan, and then amendment to the penalty provisions for late payment of real estate taxes to be discussed, and it was discussed tonight at the operations and facilities committee meeting prior to this meeting, we'd like to take this discussion to the full board at this time.
All right. So we'll tell you what. I guess I have the sort of responsibility of bringing this discussion to the board a little bit. Although Dr. or Mr. Nestor would probably be able to, to give you the background a little bit better, just suffice it to say that there's moving parts, and the, the state is gonna do what the state's gonna do, and, and nobody can foresee what that may be, but they may, may overcome some of our decisions, they may make some of our decisions move for us, but there's essentially two things that we can do, or that we have the option to do, and one of those is that we typically have three payments that are available, three installments, if you will, four payments for taxes, to pay those school taxes, three month, or three monthly payments that are due, the last payment being due in October. And we also have a penalty, if it's not paid on time, that we have an up to a 10% penalty that's due as part of the process. So we can reduce that penalty, and we can add additional payments if we wish, and back up some of the, so, so we talked about that, do we want to install an additional payment, or two additional payments, so that the payments might be spread out and, and reduced a little bit? Or do we want to reduce the, the penalty from 10% down to something less? So we gave this some discussion during our operations and facility meeting prior to this meeting, and we looked at different options, a number of different options that we had, and talked it out, and what we came down on in terms of our reputation, and we'd like to we, we didn't take a decision, final decision, but we do need to come to something quick, so we will open this up for public comment later, because we're talking about this as a discussion item tonight, so we will open this up for public discussion, especially if it brings us to a motion. Is that, what we are kind of recommending to the board is that, the full board, for consideration, is that we're talking about adding one additional payment, so instead of three payments, we take to four payments, and that we reduce the penalty from 10% to 5%. These two things then will help to spread the payments out, so if you are making three payments, it gives you one additional payment, so the monthly payments will be reduced, obviously, by a third, and would also reduce the penalty, if you, if you're not able to make those four payments in time, would reduce the penalty by five, by 5%, cut them in half, making it more affordable, we understand we're in difficult times, we're trying to, to beat our taxpayers, meet our, our taxpayers where they are, and do the best that we can for them. So that's the recommendation that the committee has, and that we're bringing to the board for consideration, if they're signing to open it up for comment, or in discussion at this time, for members of the board, because there is no, at this time, or not, nobody's made a motion, there is no action, so at this time, we're not opening it for public comment, only if there's a motion to take action, would there be public comment at this time, so at this time, it's just for discussion on the board.
Bob. It's Mark. I would suggest consensus from the board, we have to do this by result. We have to do this by resolution. We won't come up to the next meeting anyhow. So what we need is, Dave and I need to, as to what you want to do, you'll ultimately take comment next meeting at it, because it'll be on the agenda, and unless the Board is coming, we'll prepare the resolution the way the Committee suggested, unless there's consensus otherwise.
That's fine. What I would say, we don't, we don't have a lot of folks in, in attendance tonight. We have eight, eight people in attendance tonight. What I would say is, since we're making a presentation, when we're finished, can we open up for public comment later, if any of those folks do have questions on it, I would like to get a chance to at least hear their questions, if that's all right. They're in the question and answer period. But for, for now, I would like to hear the questions of the members of the Board that were not at the meeting and anybody else, any members of the Board that would have any questions during this discussion session.
Bob, the only question I had, and I was there at the meeting, though, but the only question I have is, when is our timetable to put this resolution to the Board? Do we have to do this like a 30-day waiting period, or can we do it all the way at our last meeting when we officially do the budget?
Legally, I will double check. I do not believe there's an advertising requirement, so you could do it at any meeting. You must, you must do it by resolution. So the earliest we could do it is at the next meeting. I think I'll let Dave speak, as he said, he needed action pretty soon, because it's a matter of getting the tax bills printed correctly or getting up about against that deadline. So you're, you're forced to make a decision on that practical issue as opposed to a waiting period.
Okay, there we go. There certainly is an issue. However, there are some legis, there is some legislation floating around through Harrisburg that may change this as well. So I don't want to act too quickly either, because what, what we decide may be changed by the state at some point in time. I think what we'll probably do is that we'll give ourselves a deadline of the first, the first meeting in June, and hopefully be able to call it done by then. And, you know, the state's going to do what the state's going to do, and we can't be responsible for that, but let's just sort of give ourselves a goal, the first, the first meeting in June, and what happens after that will happen after that. All right, so let's just quickly run down through the, the list of folks and see if anybody has any questions, comments. So, Mrs. McIntyre, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, the only thought I had, that, I think it was mentioned before, there would be some sort of a cost incurred by the district. I can't recall if that was to add a payment, or I wasn't sure if we should hear more about that at all. Obviously, we want to do what we can to help.
Yeah, basically, if we add, if we add another payment, then the bill collectors would have to put out another set of bills, basically another iteration for everybody that does pay by, pay that extra installment. So there would be a cost for that. So what that extra payment would be, I don't know, and Mr. Nester wouldn't get that cost unless he actually sent out another, he hasn't investigated that cost. It's some ex-payment of bills. What he has said is about one, one and a half percent of the bill payers, I think, is what he said, gave it to us in the committee, of bill payers are on the installment plan or paying by, like, not on escrow. So it's not a huge number of folks, but it is some number, it is some cost.
Okay, that was my only question. I like the idea of, you know, whatever we can do to help is, is good by me.
Very good. Doc, Mr. Hart?
I think anything we can do to ease a taxpayer's burden right now is kind of our responsibility, so as long as there's no crippling penalty to the district, I'm all for it.
Thank you very much. Dr. Nipper?
Yeah, I, I was at the meeting and already said, I think lowering the penalty is a significant, and the amount is something that you and Dave and the administrative team need to specify, but I think anything we can do to help people out at this stage in what has become a very unpredictable game, I think anything we can do to help is desirable.
Okay, Mr. Mark, when last we left you during the Committee meeting, you, you had said that you were taking a little bit of time to think about it, and I haven't given you much time, but if, if there was anything you did want to ask or say at this time, you know, if you'd like to throw it in there, you can. If not, I can go on then to Mr. Lapp.
No additional comments at this time.
Very good. Mr. Lappick, for comments?
I'm still where, where I was with the Committee, going with a 5%, and if possible, adding that extra payment plan in there if it makes it easier.
Very good. Thank you for that. Mrs. Custer, any questions, comments, additional thoughts?
Nope, just the additional installment and the 5%, just like was discussed at the Committee meeting.
Very good. Happy with that. Mrs. Grim, you were not at the Committee meeting, so this is the first hearing of the proposal as we've discussed it here. Do you have questions, comments, worries, concerns, or any thoughts that you'd like to share with us?
Wait a minute, there we go. And, sorry about that. And I think it's a great plan. Thank you.
Very good. Happy about that. All right, Mr. Leach, that brings us to you, sir.
I actually agree with the proposal you put in, where we would drop to 5% and increase from the three to the four. So it gives our, obviously, our constituents that do not have the escrow, that gives them an extra month to make payments, so it lowers their payments, plus it gives them the opportunity to have the small change in penalty from the 10% to 5%, so I'm all for that.
All right. Very good. That's good news. I'm happy about that. So we have some consensus here. So as our solicitor mentioned, as Mr. Davis mentioned, and thank you for that, we are going to have a resolution so we can bring this for action. I would very much like to, now, next meeting, I think we've got another meeting here in May, but it won't be on the May agenda, the second meeting in May. Let's plan on putting it on the agenda for the first meeting in June for that resolution, so I'll give folks time to think about it and bring up any questions. And that'll be, that'll be just fine, and if, in the meantime, the state does any action that makes this overcome by events or changes, then we'll certainly roll with those as they happen. Dr. Scherk, do you have any questions, or are you clear on what we've talked about? Yes, McGraw, I am clear, and I just, just, that'll be on, that resolution will be on the Board agenda for June 9. Very good. All right, so let's move on to Section 10, I guess. At this time, Section 10.1, professional staff retirement, we'd like the Board to approve the professional staff retirement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the retirement of Mrs. Worley retiring, and, I'm sorry. Are there any questions on this? No questions? Then I will just take a moment to say that's just another one, as some, most, everybody, I guess by now knows, I, I'm an alumnus of Fosgrove, and been here a long time, and there's just one, one more of those teachers that it's been, been here a very long time, and just very sad, a year ago, happy for her, very happy for her, that, that she's going to be retiring and enjoying her time with her husband, and that's terrific for her, but very sorry to see her leaving. She's been a tremendous asset for, for our district and just years and years of knowledge, experience, and the treasurer here, I'm trying to remember if she had all five of my children? She did. It's just a number of them, so just terrific, and congratulations, congratulations, Mrs. Worley. So there being no other questions, all those in favor of approving its retirement signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, so, so noted, without objection. Any make your motion, make motion on 10.2. 10.2, yes. I'd like the Board to approve the support staff retirement.
So moved.
So moved.
Hey, guys, you can't fall apart on me here down at the end. We have a motion, we need a second. Second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second from Dr. Nipper, on 10.2, support staff retirement. Did we have any questions on 10.2? No questions. That being the case, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Who opposed, say no? All right. Without objection, very good. Moving on to 11.1, one of the jobs of the school board is to select your treasurer. We need to do that for the 2021 school year. I'm asking the Board to do that.
I would like to nominate Scott. Do we need a second for that, or how's that work?
I'll second.
Sorry, it took me a second now. You do not need to have a second. The Chair will allow the votes, and we'll have a roll call or a motion in a second to close nominations, and we'll vote on each one that's nominated.
If I can ask a question, is there anybody else interested in being treasurer next year?
I would like to continue.
Second question, does this, is there a date deadline? Does this have to be decided tonight, or since there's at least two interested, do we have time to think about it and vote next meeting?
The school code requires you to do it in the month of May, so you could do it at your next meeting.
I would request, I guess I don't have to make a motion, I, since there's no motion out there yet to table, so I don't have to table it, but I would suggest that we wait to next meeting then, since this is new to me at least. I guess I can make a motion. I'll make a motion to wait till next board meeting to make a, to vote for the treasurer for next year, or, yeah.
Can everybody hear me? I'll make the motion if we want to hold off till next meeting.
Well, okay, he's, he's already made the motion. You can second that motion.
Oh, second, yeah. That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor of postponing this decision until next meeting signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, no. Okay, so we're without objection. We'll move on to the next thing for the MCIU bid award. The MCIU bid award, we're asking the Board, the general supply, art supply, medical supply, paper bid conducted by the Montgomery County Executive, presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the MCIU bid award. The amounts of it are there, you can see the total of it is $115,000, $22.04. Is there any, any questions on the bid and the award? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Okay. All those opposed, say no, and state your name. No, very good. So we're without objection. Moving on to, for one staff member, we're asking the Board to approve the conference as submitted.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve virtual conference, item 17.1. Does anybody have any questions on this conference? If not, all those approved, say aye.
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 All those opposed, all those opposed, say o. So we're without objection. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving on to the JOC. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. An update, Mr. Morrison, I talked to him today, and he thanked everyone for their tremendous efforts at the Western Center for over the past seven and a half, seven and a half weeks. I'm hearing a necko, is that okay? Can everybody hear me? And the staff contacted every student to check on them and their families. Of course, there were some that they couldn't reach, but kudos to them for checking out on the students. So it's double coverage, really, for our students over there. They processed over 300 applications. There's 270 acceptance packets that are going to be mailed out to the student, and as of today, there are only 20 to 30 open morning seats. Our newest program that we approved for this year, starting with welding, and we're off to a great start, we have 20 students assigned up for that. That's phenomenal. May 27th, they'll be hosting the new student orientation night via Zoom. Instructors, all the instructors will host their own individual program meetings with some of the administration following up with them. Senior recognition at the Western Center is in the process of creating a video presentation to be available on May the 30th, and we did look at the budget, and we will, once the minutes are approved, I'll come back and give you all the details on the budget. And that ends my report. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Grim.
Welcome.
Moving on to 14.1, we're asking the Board to accept the minutes of the Athletic Co-curricular Committee.
Co-Curricular Committee Community Relations.
Make a motion to combine 14.1, 14.2.
On, repeat again, second.
We have a motion and a second to combine 14.1 and 14.2, the minutes of the two particular committees mentioned, all those in favor signify, I'm sorry, really my last, does anybody have any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Motion carries without objection, thank you very much.
Moving on to the Policy Committee, we would like Mr. Parker, the chair, to please report out on the meeting that was held on April 30th.
All right, we started out the meeting looking at old business, which was policy 904, public attendance. This was first opened at our previous meeting to add in language regarding tobacco and vaping due to some changes in the law. We did that, but we also addressed a couple thoughts from one of the board members, one being addressing disruptive issues from adults at public events, as well as whether additional people should be able to attend for free. We decided those two topics would be most appropriate to be addressed at the Athletic Committee, we sent it back there, they felt the issue regarding, you know, just any adults that might become disruptive was already addressed in the policy and they needed more time to consider as far as additional people should be allowed in for free and just procedurally what that would look like. So that was tabled to give the Athletics Committee additional time to look at that. Then we went to a new policy or a new business and started with a current policy, 816.1, use of live stream video on school district property. This was additional recommendations or language was recommended for this policy to address something that's been in use at our district, telepresence robots in the schools that are being used for homebound students. I believe I commented on that at a previous meeting, but if anybody wants more specifics on what that is, we can provide that. So we discussed a couple things with that, it was asked if the district would, you know, there was connectivity issues as far as a homebound student not having the internet access, would we provide that? And yes, the district would provide that. It was also brought up, the language, we had to adapt a little bit regarding dress code issues. The policy we talked about, talked about the district dress code, but we don't have a district dress code, it's building specific, so that language is going to get updated. And lastly, we talked about the current policy does not allow for the recording of lessons, but a couple concerns was raised with that, one being how we're currently doing things because of the situation we're in, but also the potential benefits for teachers when a teacher would choose to record a lesson in the future. So Dr. Harney is, we tabled that policy, Dr. Harney is going to look at recent language handed down from the attorneys to address some of the issues how we're doing school right now virtually, and that'll be added and brought back to us next meeting. After that, we addressed two policies at once, 006.1, which is a new policy being recommended from PSBA to address what we're doing right now as far as attendance at meetings, meetings via electronic means. Because Pottsgrove is, tries to be ahead of the curve, we had already had language in that covered that within policy 006 titled Meetings. So we simply moved line, cut and paste the language from 006 and moved it into 006.1 to be consistent with PSBA recommendations. Those two policies were there, thus moved to 30-day review. Lastly, we discussed policy 626, federal fiscal compliance. This again was raised because of the situation that we're in now and simply wording was added to allow us, when needed, due to the working conditions, to charge salaries of employees to our federal accounts during situations such as what we're in right now. That policy was also moved to 30-day review. Any questions regarding any of those policies? Okay, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, appreciate that. Moving on to new business, floor is open.
Business, I always have to turn my head and look next to me to Mrs. Graham, she's always got something for new business, so what do you got first tonight, Mrs. Graham?
You know what, honestly, nothing.
Nothing.
What?
My husband was tested for the virus, news is he has pneumonia, he doesn't have the virus, but I've been kind of busy taking care of him, but I just applaud the school district for all they're doing with the community, the meals, what they're doing with the seniors, it's so positive. And, and this will pass.
Yes, it will, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Usually if there's nothing there, then I look next, right next to her is Mr. Leach, and Mr. Leach, usually you've got something for us.
Yeah, actually I do, I got something. This was going to probably lead into Dr. Nipper's if he wanted afterwards. I actually attended the, I guess what they call it, was the PSBA Zoom meeting for the state, and I guess it was held this afternoon in regards to a lot of the different presidents and vice presidents were there for a whole bunch of different school districts. One of the things obviously discussed was about the budget, and I would like to say that you have to commend the administration, Dr. Mr. Nestor and everybody that's worked so hard on our budget, if you were there at the meeting and listening to all the other school districts and how bad some of these school districts have, one particular school district who's much larger than ours, much, much larger than ours, had like $400,000 left in their general fund budget and has no idea how they're going to make up $3.6 million of loss. They're talking about cutting like a huge amount of their teachers. Other districts are already asking for pay freezes for their teachers, and even though they have a contract, they're asking their teachers in their Act 93s to take pay freezes for the next two years. So I got to hand it to everybody that's done so much on ours to the point where actually, where we're so solvent compared to many of the districts in our area. The second thing, and it's not just a question, I guess, like I said, it's going to go into Dr. Nipper's thing in a second about the resolution, it does seem that the, the PSBA is really looking to see where we stand on this resolution, they're going to want to get some type of information from us, so Dr. Nipper can talk a little bit more about that. And lastly, they discussed, and I don't, I didn't have an answer, is are we going to think about continuing food distribution during the summer? I don't know the answer to that.
Mr. Leach, we are currently discussing that with our business, you know, our business and department and our food service, so stay tuned for more information, we'll follow regarding that piece, there's a lot of moving parts to that, and we just want to make sure that we have all the correct information before we bring that to the board.
Thank you, that was it.
Okay, okay. Hopefully, yeah. Hopefully Al kind of gave me a segue. First of all, I want to extend my hope to Patty and her husband and hope that everything works out and that your husband gets better and we're, you're able to carry on. Secondly, I want to join the many who are praising our administration for their fiscal prudence and their fantastic planning. That puts us in a very, very much better boat than a lot of the districts that I talk to when I go to the Legislative Committee meetings at MCIU. I sent a copy to the other members of the board of the resolution that Al was referring to, which talks about funding and evidently some people weren't able to read it. So I'm going to ask that we consider this as a motion for next meeting and I'll send it out again, I don't know who got what and who could read what, so I, it would be very awkward to have a discussion at this time where a, I did something that I promised I wouldn't do, which is send something out just shortly before the meeting. I think I sent the meeting, I sent this resolution out in February when the, the COVID hit. Basically what it talks about is a attempt to adjust the funding for charter and cyber charter schools. And Dave and the administration can talk about how that impacts our budget and how this, how much that costs us. I don't want to spend a lot of time tonight talking about it, but that's what I want you to think about, is dealing with the funding for especially cyber charter schools. And at this point, I just want to ask that we basically table this motion, maybe Dale as our legal advisor may want to look at this and see whether it's, you know, see that it's okay for us to authorize. That's all I have to say. I'll have more to talk about it at our next meeting.
Dr. Nipper, the only issue I had, and I brought it up to them and I didn't get an answer from them, and maybe you could push this out to the committee you're on, is the resolution that you sent us and the resolution that everybody's signing is incredibly vague. Yes, I believe every school district wants some type of charter change, something to do with fixing the charter system, but the resolution pretty much just says that, it's we want change. It says no details at all, which is what I'm concerned with. I mean, I would think if they're going to make a resolution, the resolution should have some details as into what we're looking for, rather than just say, we want change.
Let me address that partially. There are at least four or five bills in the House and the Senate of the state of Pennsylvania, and the number has changed. So the first thing I would love to say is, we want to, we want to oppose HB 2461, I think that's the right number. But there's four or five other bills, the bills have been withdrawn, they're being amended, so I think there is a justification for being general at this stage in the game. I don't like, I don't like it, I'd like to have, I'd like to be able to say oppose House Bill XYZ. But at this point, that's not the game the other side is playing. So I can see what you want, I can perhaps provide you with a list of House bills and Senate bills at the next meeting, but there's going to have to be an asterisk behind them, subject to change.
Chuck, this all came on the heels of Representative Cerise's, what he was proposing, correct?
No, this actually predated Cerise's proposals, and in fact, one of his proposals, the proposal to defer when the, when the budget is due, is that the one you're referring to?
It was about 150, 200 pages, I can't really be sure what everything in there was.
Oh, oh no, that wasn't Cerise's proposal, that was, that was a proposal from several people regarding cyber charter schools, and I may have sent that one to you back before, yeah, I think I sent that back before COVID struck and we still had, we still had a lifestyle. But, but yeah.
Can you just
That bill is basically dead in the water.
Okay.
And
Yeah.
The bills that have been discussed right now have been fairly much, as I've been sending out to the committee or to the board, have been pretty much along party lines.
Isn't it? No, it's just, it's vague, I agree with Al, I mean, we all agree.
I agree with you, I can give you a list of bills, I'd have to go on a website and it'd take a, probably take a half an hour or so to sort through them. But I, but I think that's, I think, I think at this point, all we can do is generally say, we need an adjustment, especially with cyber charter schools and with the assessment, the amount the district has to give up and the amount the cyber schools are getting, that's where we need the adjustment. And that's a bigger issue. You know, that's, that's for me, the biggest issue is cyber charter. I'll shut up there. Okay, this is not a motion.
No, no, that's right, there's no, there's no motion.
Yeah.
So, does anybody else have any new business that they would like to go over? Dr. Shirk, do you have any new business?
No sir, not tonight. No sir, not tonight.
Okay, very good.
Can I say something?
Yes, I'm sorry, you're the, you're the other one of my usual customers.
Just real quick, I honestly don't, I haven't had time to do the research on this that I would have liked, but it came to my attention a few days ago that there is new, I guess, laws, regulations surrounding Title IX. Like I said, I haven't really dug deep into it, I think it's like a 2,000-page document, so obviously I'm not going to read it all, but apparently the changes are, some of the changes are pretty significant and they do affect K through 12 in addition to colleges and universities. So I didn't know, I assume Mark is still on the call. If, if we know how it's going to affect the K through 12, our district, I, some of the stuff that it was affecting at the post-secondary level was somewhat alarming, but in a way I could sort of understand it coming from, you know, two, looking at it from two different points of view. So I just didn't know, I just want to make sure that we know how it's going to affect our, our district, if anything needs to change. All that stuff.
I expect the PSBA will be sending materials to Dr. Harney, as you pointed out, the really big takeaway, you're right, I think the act is over 1,000 pages, but the big takeaway does not affect us, there are other things that will, but the big takeaway is the due processes issues and the hearing issues on sexual harassment and sexual assault at the post-secondary level, as you pointed out, that's, that's really been the big issue, changing the burden of proof, giving individuals the right to counsel, the right to cross-examination, a lot more rights for the accused, but there are another 900 pages and we're certainly going to be working on it. I, I don't think there's anything major, but there will be some changes for K through 12.
All right, thanks, Mark.
All right, thanks, Mark. I know there was, I believe there was changes for, what are they called, a mandatory reporter? Or what, what, when someone is mandated to, you know, they were required to report, you know, being told about an assault or, you know, suspecting whatever if student comes to them.
Yeah.
I haven't read the whole, I haven't researched enough to be confident in what I'm saying.
There are changes there, but it's my sense and belief that much of that at the K through 12 level was already required. I mean, if administrator or a teacher gets issue about some kind of child abuse, you have child line and mandatory reporting already. So again, I don't, and I'll have to look into it further. I don't believe from our level, the change is as massive as it is at the post-secondary level. But there are changes and we'll be working on them. I believe if I'm correct, we have until January.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Sure.
All right, very good. I think that takes us out of new business. That brings us now into public comment. And I don't see any additional comments down there. I don't see anything under chat, so I think we're in pretty good shape.
If you want to look under questions, if you want to look under questions, if you have an answer.
I did.
An answer.
Yeah. Nothing there. So very nice comments from Mrs. Sessing, I do appreciate that.
Yes.
And so I think that means that a motion to adjourn would be welcome and in order.
I'm moved.
So we need a second. One of you has to be a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those signify by aye, saying aye.
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 Okay, that brings us to an end. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.